Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for a work session. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Leland.
Here.
Little. Maxman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Little, did you just join us?
Yes.
Let the record show that Mr. Little's joining us by phone.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Tom. Now, the agenda received is proposed or is amended?
So move.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Budget work session, discussion, possible board action with Marcus and Milichap on the proposed sale of the Country View care facility.
I thought he was in here. Where'd he go?
No, Susan's not here yet either.
I think they were talking.
I'm on?
You're on.
Hi, good afternoon. Sorry, what's coming from? An hour and a half away. A little longer. It's Tom.
He's on the phone, so he's here electronically.
Thank you.
Susan has it electronically, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it up here. I can be wrong.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we could introduce Mr. Eric Johnson, whom the board has retained as an expert real estate attorney in this project. Mr. Johnson is...
Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Afternoon, Eric.
There, go down, Eric.
So, as we're waiting to get that up on the screen, thanks again for letting me come back, and I know this wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting maybe, but I appreciate everybody's time. What I'm gonna do today is just go through the broker opinion of value. This will be the market pricing and positioning analysis. We have a couple different synonyms. Those are synonyms that are interchangeable, and just go through our processes on pricing, marketing strategy. Shouldn't take too long, but I prefer to, you know, go through it, and then we can have a couple minutes for questions afterwards, if that's okay. And with no further ado, let's hop right in here. Let's go to section one. It's actually page five. The investment highlights.
Just a minute, it's gonna take.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Ask Tom if he can see this really good.
Well, I see what? She has it there. I'm not sure.
Yeah, you in a minute.
Okay.
Rory, come on here.
Does it not get online?
Oh, okay.
Just crying.
He's down here, he's waiting.
You're plugged in, right?
I'm plugged in. I'm just waiting for the internet, or maybe it's...
That's my father's. Should've been here earlier.
No, I'm plugged in. It's showing my... I'm not... I need the internet. I gotta get to my webmail so I can pull up the attachment.
Would you like me to start and go through? We can wait. It doesn't... It's up to you guys.
Probably makes some sense to wait, just because then what you're speaking to...
It's fine, yeah.
We have a public address, but...
I'm gonna go put it in a folder and pull it up. Hold on.
There it is.
Yeah, it's up. I just can't...
So, I understand we're supposed to see some weather this afternoon?
So they say.
I don't even look. I don't like to look. Well, let's see if it's really... Is it gonna be bad?
I don't know. They talked about ice and snowmicks, and depending on the time, so we'll see.
I guess while we're waiting, is there any additional information that you're needing from the county about the Country View facility?
At this time, no. We could use... I believe we only have six-month financials. Historical, more historical financials would be helpful. As we get in here, there's a couple things on the census that we need some clarity on that we've spoken with Susan about, but for our purpose here today, I think we're all set.
So, we do have Carol Laurie is here, and she... Afterwards, you could get that information from her.
Okay. Thank you.
We sent some pictures too the other day. Was that enough, or would you need...
Yes, plenty. Perfect. Those are the ones you'll see in the book here as we get through here. The joys of technology?
Mm-hmm.
Very much.
You have click on the bottom of the screen?
Yeah, I was thinking.
A lot. Okay. So, Susan, it's page five. That will start. Section one. Okay. All right. So, as I said, we're just gonna touch through our processes, the way we come up with valuations, how we present those valuations to the market, and I know the first thing I'd like to... Well, I'll just dive in here. You know, the opportunity highlights, we kinda went through that before, but the upside in this asset and the way the buying community will view this asset as, first of all, an increase in the Medicare mix, and secondly, the expense management side. Nothing earth-shattering there. We love to highlight the Medicaid rate increase there. It's 194, and, you know, the facility is close to unity point out there on 63. So, you'll see minimum bid. I know I kinda threw cold water the last time I was here on the minimum bid process, but we, upon further review and after looking at the financials and seeing what's going on, we feel like a minimum bid process is the most efficient process to run on this asset to maximize, you know, the price. So, to start non-accretive financial... Or, non-accretive SNFs, skilled nursing facilities generally trade, this is a general rule of thumb, at 75% of trailing 12-month gross revenue. So, as you'll see in the financials, we only have six months of financials, so we just annualize those six months. So, it could fluctuate a little bit when we see, you know, the next six months, but generally, you can expect 75% of gross revenue. That's where... That's how the buying community looks. It's, you know, that's where they trade. So, 75% of your gross trailing revenue is roughly eight and a half million dollars. Twelve million dollars in revenue, that's the first thing folks are gonna look at and be intrigued at. That's a good number. So, in determining a bid price, it's a delicate process. So, where do you set that price? Our objective is that eight and a half million number. Is that a high probability number? No, it isn't. In a perfect world, perfect market, we could probably hit that number, you know, with more, you know, maybe a 50-50 or a 40-60 probability. So, the next metric I want you to look at is the price per bed, the 32,000. That is a perfect... Nursing homes usually trade in Iowa, unless they're more tertiary, way outside of, you know, not around Cedar Falls or Waterloo. That's a nice... That will intrigue buyers. Thirty to $35,000 is the band usually where SNFs trade in Iowa. So, the first question you probably ask is, well, the minimum bid, if we're gonna drive up price, obviously, the price per bed goes right with it. So, in setting a minimum bid, you want it to have... You want it to be low enough to get the most people we can to the table, to get interested, looking and underwriting the deal. You want it high enough to keep all the low ballers and all the, you know, not real buyers out of the mix. So, the gray area that we play, you know, this isn't a straight cap rate deal. Nursing homes generally trade on a cap rate, you know, net opportunity or internal rate of return, cap rate, yield, whatever. They're all synonyms, however you wanna look at it. So, this isn't a cap rate deal. It's not accretive. We're losing money at the asset, so it's not a cap rate deal. Now, we go back to that revenue number. So, as you'll see in a minute, when we get into the financial analysis, you want that minimum bid at five and a half, 32,000 a bed, right down the fairway. That's perfect. That brings everybody in the door, start looking at the deal, looking at the numbers, and seeing what they can do with that revenue on their expense chassis. As we go up in price, and they say, well, we get up to 40... You know, eight and a half million dollars is roughly... It's probably 50, 55,000 a bed, but that's the gray area. As people look at this deal, they see the revenue, they see the price per bed. What can we do in there? Where is that price that makes sense for us? And there's a lot of different variables. Everybody looks at it differently, but starting at five and a half, which is, you know, a very palpable number for what, you know, Country View is churning out right now, you get in there and they see, you know, is it gonna go all the way to eight and a half million? Most likely not, but that five and a half million number, we feel very confident of achieving that. We feel 85 to 90% confident that there will be qualified nursing home players that will want to look at this deal. So, the other thing I wanna mention right here before we go on is that eight and a half million number, that's derived off of our pro forma also on 75% of the gross revenue. You'll see that translates to a 14 cap on trailing in-place revenue, not cash flow, not EBITDAR, but on that cash flow, 13 to 15% cap rates are where skilled nursing facilities trade. That will be the key number. That's how you drive them up to that, because they're looking at this, you know, not for six months, not for... They're looking at this for seven, 15, 20 years, whatever that horizon is. When they get this operating efficiently, those are the numbers that they'll be... That they'll be trying to obtain. How much of that premium are they gonna pay on the front end? That's our job to, you know, tell the story, show them the upside, and show them what the home can do. And a lot of that will help with historical financials if, you know, to show some profitable years or some recent years, if there were any. So, let's go to page six now. The next page. You know, talking about our process a little bit, these are loose dates and loose numbers. We obviously will tie this up in an RFP, but, you know, the deal highlights, we already went over a little bit. The pricing, normally, they put in April 6th for the bid deadline. That's six weeks, you know, that's obviously... These are all in flux, and this is just for our purposes here today to go through. But, you know, to talk about the process again, if we should be lucky enough to earn the business and take this to market, we put the flyer out like we talked about last time, the teaser, the, you know, 100-plus beds, SNF acquisition opportunity northeast Iowa and Waterloo. That's the flyer, very vague, keep it confidential. They click on the link on that flyer if they wanna take a look. That takes them to the confidentiality agreement. They look at the confidentiality, then they go... They accept that, then they go into the data vault. So, usually, in the RFP, we wanna derive that timeline. So, is it 30 days for them to look at it, to take a look? Is it 45 days? Is it 15 days? 15's a little aggressive, but we can all talk about that and, you know, zero in on the effective date to give them to look at the deal. Usually, 30 days is a good number. So, at that end of the month, we can ask for offers, we can give them 15 more days or whatever the case is, but, you know, as I said, every deal is different, and once you get into it, you don't know, but I'm speaking in general terms. Hopefully, we have 10 interested parties, maybe 15, maybe it's only five. We can say, okay, let's have a call to offers. And, you know, again, we'll have that road map in the RFP to those deadlines and stuff, but, you know, they can... Everything is subject to, you know, it's the county's asset. We... You all drive the process with me, you know, conveying that message to the buying community. So, you call the offers. We don't want anyone touring the asset, anyone looking at the asset until they have an offer. And if it's a group we aren't aware of, which could very well happen, you know, we look for proof of funds. What do you guys own? What's your plan? You know, what's... You know, are they qualified to be doing this? Because we don't wanna give anyone access that is not real and not going to pursue this asset.
And they're the ones that told...
So, then we run the tour process, you know, and then from there, from the offers, we lay them all out, and then we have another meeting and go through all the buyers. What is their plan? How are they sticking to the RFP guidelines that they were given? And we choose, you know, what's their plan? We can have interviews at that point. We can have Q and As on the internet, conference calls, whatever it is, and that's, you know, as intensive as we wanna make it, so everyone in this room and in the community is comfortable with the transition of who, you know, who is potentially gonna take over the asset. So, now, I would like to go to the financial analysis, which is page eight. So, this is the nuts and bolts of what we do. This is the biggest value that we bring, is being able to... If you look at the first column, it's the December 2017 T6. That's trailing six-month annualized numbers. As I mentioned, we only have the six months. The next column is the PPD. PPD is per patient day. That is what the buying community will value these assets at. And so, the reason you don't see PPDs here is 'cause we had some questions on the census as far as we have an idea, but we need to drill down a little more, and for our purposes here, those will be in the offering memorandum if and when we do go to market. So, if you look below, well, the total revenue number on the trailing six in place, what the home is doing now is 12,381,000. The pro forma revenue number is 11 million. First question is what happened there? In a pro forma, you usually wanna go up. That's with the behavioral unit and some of the subsidies that you're funding the behavioral unit with won't be there from what I told... From what we've gathered. So, that's why the revenue number is down. Now, when you're constructing a pro forma, banks don't lend off of pro formas. This is for... I mean, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, but we need to tell the story with a conservative pro forma and not putting up a bunch of phony baloney numbers there. Yeah, we can do this, we do this, we do this. So, if you look at our pro forma, we adjusted one thing, the benefits and payroll taxes. Now, if you see the 113 PPD versus the 13 PPD, all the PPDs you see in our pro forma are gathered from our databases, from public databases that we pay for. Those are all the competitions in this area of about 12 homes. That is what their average PPD is. It's public information, it's all off the cost reports. Yours is 113 PPD. That's obviously the union and, you know, all the benefits and payroll taxes, but without tweaking much, you can see how this will be very appealing to the market. So, what else do I wanna explain here? If you look at the box on the lower right, well, let's do the box on the upper right, Country View Census. Those are the numbers now. We didn't change anything, you know, we want the market to... We want them to do their analysis. We don't wanna tell them, you know, you're gonna have seven more Medicares. We wanted... They drive their own analysis, so you can see the current census with Medicaid, Medicare, PMI, the managed care insurance. You see the occupied beds, the available beds. What we like to do is a sensitivity analysis. So, for this particular asset, other than the expense play, it's the Medicare, and you can see we do, what does it look like with four more Medicare patients? What does it look like with seven? And you obviously don't just raise the revenue with that, the expenses are... The corresponding expenses are raised with that. So, all the folks in the area, that competition pool that I just mentioned, their average rate is $449 a day in Medicare. So, that's where the number... That's where those EBITDAR numbers are coming. It's a tremendous upside. It's a tremendous value proposition for anyone looking at this asset to take it over, to do, you know, put some money back into it. They need to see how they're gonna pay for it. That is a huge... It's very appealing, and without tweaking all of the pro forma, you know, the bed tax, the nursing, the plan ops, all these different things, they will do their own tweaking. This is just the general average rates that are in the market, and that's where our pro forma comes from. So, you see currently, facilities doing negative $2.7 million roughly a year. With the pro forma, with that simple one expense tweak, you can get this to 1.1 million, but the more importantly, the margin below that, an efficient-run nursing home operates at a 10 to 15% margin. So, we like to stay on the conservative end of that, and we got up to the 10% based on that, you know, simple benefits and payroll taxes adjustment to get to a 10.4 margin. So, there's also upside in the margin play there. And that is it for this page. Now, I'd like to go to page 10, which is the property summary. This is just general information about the property. I please invite everybody to look at it for its accuracy and stuff that we've... All the information we've compiled, nobody's perfect, and if there are mistakes, please point them out, but this is just general stuff of the home, acreage, rooms, units, skilled nursing, renovations. Another thing that would be very helpful is a capex schedule, capital expenditures schedule of all the improvements and all the money you have spent in the home over the years, you know, sprinklers, acreage, 15.8. Another point down on the unit summary that you'll see, you don't see a lot of quad rooms anymore in nursing homes. That is a potential room to bring Medicaid in. You renovate those rooms into nice private rooms, that's... And that's where the Medicaid... The Medicare, pardon me, the Medicare residents I spoke of will come from. Just an option. They may, you know... I'm not the operator. Everybody looks at these things differently, but from my perspective and looking at 30,000 feet down, that's one of the first things they'll look at. Same thing with the triples, with one in the Elms and four in the Oaks. Those are conversion potentials, or you make them doubles, or, you know... One of the plays that they will look at in this, do you really need 168 licensed beds? You decertify some of those beds, which may be an option. Your cost basis and everything, your future Medicaid rates are potentially gonna go up 'cause if you take the certified beds out, bed tax, there's a bunch of calculations in that, but it basically comes down to you have better odds of getting... The bed taxes, you have to maintain 75 to 85% occupancy. I think it's... I think it's 75%. So, if you have vacant beds, it's costing you money. That's why you decertify them. Then you put all the capex money to, you know, for the next rebates. That's another option that the buying community will look at. The next pages are just pictures that were very nice. Thank you, Susan, for sending those. And then, the last piece is the rent comps on page 15. This is another very important selling point for this deal. First of all, the proximity of the hospital, that's good, that's great. Second of all, look at the total beds. You look at the occupancy. Most of these nursing homes, county homes, or homes that are failing operationally, losing money, are at 50 to 60% occupied. You know, we've seen lower than that. Look at the competition, 91%, 82%, Ravenswood, 78%, Harmony House, which is an ABCM facility, they're about 83%. All the homes around here are in the mid-80s, very, very appealing to the market, especially if somebody's gonna take this over and sink some capex dollars into it to renovate, change things around, powder puff. You know, that occupancy number's gonna go up if they decertify beds, but it's a comforting thing to see the market can handle all of these homes. So, the one column I like to... The QAAF, rate without the QAAF, that's a quality assurance add-on fee. Kinda goes in... Vents is the big comparison in that number. That's... You can see, some folks will come in and, hey, can we put some vent patients in here? And you can see those rates on the right. Right now, without it, you can see the rates, and you can see the competition rates. Your rate is good, 184, you know, and the bottom end is 138, and a couple other, you know, it's basically 140 to 184. You were the high rate, very appealing to the market. So, the next page, just proximity to the hospital, stats on the hospital, pretty self-explanatory there. And the last section is demos, demographic analysis, which, you know, is fine. I was up in Manona this morning and comparing that market to Waterloo. It's a perfect dichotomy. It's a perfect example of the types of markets in Iowa. You know, Waterloo and Cedar Rapids, or Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Cedar Rapids, they're great markets when people are in Iowa or wanting to get into Iowa, or they're currently buying and they're looking for more add-ons in Iowa. They generally don't wanna go to a tertiary small town. They're tougher to succeed. Waterloo's the perfect market, which is demonstrated by these demographics here. So, I know I just threw a lot at you, and we can talk about this when I'm done, but just to kinda tie things up a little bit, this asset is... You're generating $12 million in revenue on 168 beds. That's a very good number. You know, obviously, it's the expense side of the ledger and the first, you know, the first things that, well, somebody's gonna come in and slash and burn and get rid of everybody and change things around. It's not gonna be a union shop after, you know, should we decide to proceed, but the groups that we bring to the table, and this is exactly why you hire a team like ours, a group that buys this home does not wanna come into the community and ruffle everyone's feathers and set everybody off. You know, it's a sense, as we've talked about ad nauseam, it's sensitive. People are, you know, connected to this home. The groups that we've dealt with in this county home business and other groups, they understand that, and they're professional at coming in and easing that transition to make it as easy as possible in the community and for the inevitable, you know, folks that don't wanna go along with it, you're crazy, we shouldn't sell it. You know, the bottom line is, we would like to bring this, you know, bring this to market and bring it to a good conclusion for everybody involved, and I don't know if those... If our valuations fall in with what you're doing, but we're pretty confident the five and a half number, you know, originally, we coughed five to seven. I think that is still the band that we'll be playing in, and, you know, we love the opportunity to take this to market and bring it to a conclusion that satisfies everyone. So, fire away.
You've briefly touched on timeline, but I guess into a more defined timeline for us as far as how you see the process of working through this, should we go forward?
Normally, I would say six months is the good rule of thumb, but for this process and with the conference I mentioned last time I was here, the National Investment Conference is skilled nursing. It's a senior living conference that everybody's at, is March 7th in Dallas, and it's basically us face-to-face with every buying... Every buyer in the community, every seller, or in the nation. And so, having that just puts the whole marketing process in hyperdrive. People face-to-face generally don't, you know, mess around with you and tell you inaccurate things. Oh, we're very... On the phone, yeah, we're interested, we're great, you know, but face-to-face, you can get committals. And I would say three to four months. Just looking at the financials, I think... three to four months. Just looking at the financials, I think there's going to be, I think there would be good interest in this asset, which expedites the process. So, I'd say three to six months.
Okay. I'm looking at more defined, I guess, even for us, like from an RFP standpoint, or our next step in this process after today, how would you see that, and the timeline for that, and moving forward, should we decide to do that?
I would think, you know, the RFP is, is, is a, is a process that takes some time. I think two to three weeks for that. I think that's our biggest time consumer at this point. I defer to the attorney on those conversations, you know, just because it's, it's, I don't know how, I don't know if you've done those before, but it's strenuous. It's a lot of conversation and back and forth. But it's generally, you know, we make all these comments, and the attorneys have it, they make their comments, and it comes back, and then we tweak it a little more. And, you know, we could expedite that. If, I know time is of the essence. I'm more than happy, we could do that on the way, we could come back. And, you know, that's, if we want to go with it, we can get aggressive, as aggressive as, as you all want on the time.
I know you provided that matrix to us with all the various factors, and how we could decide on assortment of things. Do you work with us, with Eric's help, and, and we work together as a group, or is that something we work with Eric? And, or how does that typically?
However you all want it. I think it's, we, it's our experience, it's better to have the group involved, just so everybody's on the same page, and, and expectations are all aligned. To have, you know, it's just better in a group, is our experience. I mean, more than happy to do it individually, but with, it's just better to have everyone involved. Especially if, if time is of the essence, you know, you want everybody involved in those conversations.
I guess, you know, obviously, time is consideration. But I don't think it is necessarily the ultimate. If it takes six months to do it properly, then we perhaps need to look at that. And you, you provided some sample RFPs, and I'd ask Mr. Johnson, if you've had an opportunity to look at any of those, what your thoughts are in moving forward with an RFP.
I don't think I've seen a sample RFP. I've seen a, I've seen a proposed listing agreement. And I don't know if we're fixing terms. I mean, that's all I've seen is the proposals.
So, the RFP is the request for proposal?
I understand what request.
Oh.
I think, I think perhaps you sent those to us early on.
Yeah, we just had samples just to finalize it.
So, they may not have been forwarded to Eric.
For this asset.
No.
So, I haven't seen that. The only thing that I've been forwarded so far has been the proposed listing agreement.
Well, it would see. And how, how does that differ?
Well, I mean, the listing agreement is really the contractual agreement you enter into with.
Eric, come up to the mic, please. Thank you.
The, the listing agreement is really the contractual agreement you enter into with the brokerage firm, indicating the terms, the terms of your relationship with them. What you've hired them to do, what the timeframe for them to do that, and of course, then what the consideration they'll receive for providing that service. So, that, that's what the listing agreement is. Had a chance to review it, it's pretty typical. Maybe a tweak here or there that we would, we would ask for, but nothing that they haven't seen before, that they would find objectionable, I don't think.
So, that would be the step that the board would need to look at, and evaluate it if they wanted to approve moving forward with that. When we get to the RFP, that's what goes out to the companies that perhaps are interested in this facility.
Yeah. Well, so I, I think that there's going to be a little bit of an interplay between the two, because the listing agreement says that we are going to owe a commission if they bring a buyer ready, willing, and able to purchase at a certain level. And so, if we fill in that level, and then we're not committed for some reason, or we change our mind, arguably, we might owe them something unless we somehow, you know, punt and say, you know, that list, in that listing agreement, as further defined in the RFP, which that may be something that we could work out. But, so, so the listing agreement does have some import, because we've made a commitment, once we sign that, at least with the brokerage, broker, that we're going to owe them a fee if they, if they complete their portion of that, even if we change our minds. So, we, you know, we have to have at least some certainty, or we, or we have to put some wiggle room in that listing agreement, so that if we're defining further what we're going to sell it for, what the terms are, we might then just have to enter into the listing agreement and reference a, to be agreed upon, RFP down the road. And so.
Thank you, Eric.
As far as, we don't get paid unless we close the transaction. There is no fee. I don't know if maybe there's language in there that leads you to think that. But if there is, it's obviously will be addressed, because it's not supposed to be. And I'm not an attorney, obviously, so.
I, I guess on the other side of that, if we get an offer and the board turns it down, then what?
That's, that's in the, you know, the purchase price, which I didn't fill in, because I hadn't looked at the financials and everything yet. But it would be, Blackhawk County lets us take the asset to market at a minimum bid of five and a half million. And then the sentence underneath that, price and terms can be accepted or rejected by seller.
But if we reject it, then you're saying you charge no fee?
Nope.
You mentioned that last time you were here.
It happens. You know, when you get into due diligence, or, you know, we assign a group that steps out of line, that, that, you know, it's just like, this is not what we signed up for, which is what we try to alleviate. But it's, you know, when that happens, you know, or they get out there, and, and, you know, they're doing environmental tests, and something pops up, or, oh my gosh, we have to put a $300,000 roof, or boiler, or something like that, where A, it blogs it down, it upsets people. And, you know, if it gets to that point, and that's, that's your prerogative to walk away. It, it happens. It's, it's the risk we take. But, you know, it's the risk we, we, that's the pool we swim in.
I guess you mentioned that March 7th timeline being kind of a critical point because of the conference.
It, it would help. It's not, it's not critical. You know, as we said, we don't want to rush, you know, we want everybody to be comfortable. And if, if, if we don't hit that timeline, we don't hit it. That's, it's not, you know, make or break thing by any stretch.
So, that even if you didn't have the RFP, or if we didn't have it finalized, you'd have a lot of information about us, though, as far as the face-to-face?
Absolutely.
Possibilities if we.
We could, you know, say we were working on something in Iowa. I mean, the way that would work is, you know, who's interested in Iowa, and, and what regions, what size, and, and, you know, tee them up that way.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the people on the audience?
I guess, I'd ask Eric again, what he sees a timeline for getting an agreement between Melison and Melchapp, how long that might take?
Well, I mean, I'm sure within a few days, we could put together a listing agreement that we could agree upon, especially if they are willing to make a few tweaks in there, so that it clearly sets forth, subject to, you know, price, terms, conditions, as ultimately agreed upon by the board in its discretion. You know, then, then you aren't as fully committed. You know, you're committed to moving down this process and continuing to move down, but you, you still have that protection. And so, I would think we could get that knocked out in a day or two.
So, it's possible we could have it on the first week of March?
Yes, yes, for sure.
We could probably do it sooner. The, the representation.
Yeah.
Letter, that part could be done like next week even, maybe.
The listing agreement is what you're doing.
The listing agreement, yes.
Yeah. I, I would think so. And that just gets them moving forward on your behalf. And then the RFP, you know, will, will come. But, but that would at least engage them.
Mr. Burke, do you have any questions in this?
No, no, I don't. I defer to Mr. Johnson, but I have no comments or questions at this point. Thank you.
I just wanted to go back to page A and just clarify, you're suggesting that most of the savings for a new company that buy this would come from busting the unions, scrapping the pensions, and taking away his good healthcare now and replacing those probably pretty mediocre healthcare. And that's where the $5 million in, in projected savings would come, for a new company to operate those.
What was the last part?
That's where the projected savings would come, of $5 million is all, from busting the unions, getting rid of the pensions, and, and having healthcare that's less adequate than we have now.
I don't know. How do you define adequate healthcare?
Oh, we have very good healthcare right now. And I think inadequate healthcare is, you know, premiums that have $5,000 deductibles, and that's what a lot of plans are out there, if not $10,000 deductibles.
That is, you know, you address that, and the groups that we bring to the table, and you look what they've done. You know, you look at their track record. How many county homes have you bought? You bought four. You know, you call all the, you can call those counties, and, you know, ask them how the process went, ask, you know, two years out, five years out. But for, you know, I know there's a stigma out there with nursing homes, and, and, you know, how bad the care is, or, you know, there's, there's, there's bad apples in every group. But, you know, I would argue, yeah, I don't know about pensions. I, I don't know, we don't deal in pensions. So, I'm just looking, we're looking at the average cost in the market. So, you can argue, you know, does care initiatives offer bad healthcare? I don't know. But those rates that we're looking at are what your competitors are running. So, that's another way to gauge it. You know, which ones do you think are bad? I'm not asking an answer now, but I'm just saying which ones in the area is House, Harmony House. How, you know, how, look at the other homes in the area and see how they're operating. The goal is to bring a group in that wants to own this for the next 50 years, that wants to put capital into it. We like to think of, we don't like to do business with people that have bad reputations. We're in a reputation business. We're trying to build our business. And if we come in here and bring a bunch of bad groups, and upset everybody in this room, guess what? The next time happens when I have a deal in Waterloo, or, you know, in the area. And so, I absolutely respect your concern, but we take it as our job to bring in qualified, reputable owner-operators.
Yeah. I think that's probably where we'd look at it most closely. Like you say, when you get those people that are interested in, in our RFP and have responded, that's where our.
That's when you grill them. And if, if the two offers, if they don't satisfy the legacy that, you know, if, if you don't, what is your plan five years? What does it look like two years? What does it look like five years? What does it look like 10 years? They run those models. And, you know, what, tell us what other homes you have in the area. How are you operating? Are they profitable? Are they bad? You know, obviously, every, every operator that operates in the country is on Medicare.gov. You can pull up any one of their nursing homes and see every fine issue they've had. So, you know, if we bring two groups and the highest offer, yeah, we'll pay you 10 million. And you start looking at their background. And then that's when you see, you know, they're, they got five one-star facilities, they've got seven two-star facilities, and they have one four-star. Probably not the, probably not the group to bring into a situation like this. Because it can, you know, if you bring in the wrong group, I, I acknowledge what you're saying and your concerns. It's, it's valid. But we take it as our job to ferret those groups out of the process.
When you looked at the rent comparables, you did not list Western Home, which is one of the largest facilities in the county. I know it has a mix of a lot of South P and...
We tried to take the four, and that's, you know, we're more than happy to put them in there. But they try to take the four.
Closest.
Closest. You know, whether it's, some don't have the behavioral, some have the vents, some don't. But that, yeah, there's, I mean, Harmony House wasn't in there either. I thought that should be in there also, because it's one of the bigger, bigger players in the, in the market.
And we do have some excellent healthcare providers in this community. So, I, I know when we talked about it being a local market interest, that was, to me, a.
Absolutely. I mean, Cedar Falls and Waterloo, it's, you know, it's where the hospitals are in this area.
And I think our staff, and our staff's behalf too, I said it's, they are obviously a consideration for us, and something that we're hoping that whoever we would have attracted to this facility recognizes that and wants, you know, sees.
Well, absolutely. And they see what, you know, on the revenue side, the, the home is operating efficiently. On the expense side, it's not. So, how do you do that? And, I know the union is a, it's a tough issue, but at the end of the day, what's best for the constituents? You know, that's, that, you know, you look at the tax revenue, you know, after it's passed off, you're not subsidizing the home every time you do the budget. And you're gaining all, you know, and, and an operator coming in wants to keep those key people there. Because you have people in the home, you have good occupancy, you have good revenue. So, what, what, you know, there's not a lot of ways around it, unfortunately.
No. With the workforce shortage, I think it's probably an asset for us to have the staff that we do out there, that they could utilize.
Absolutely.
We've got a lot of long-term employees out there.
That's important, you know, and those, those are your marketing, you know, that's your team that, you know, you come in and cut all those people, that, then, it's just not, that's just not a strategy.
Yeah.
Carol, what's the one, what, doesn't the one lady have 49 years? 49 years? Doesn't the one lady have 49 years? Yeah. And I asked her the question. I went out and talked to all the employees here. Well, when we were, when we changed, when I changed my mind about at least looking at this, and had a long talk with them. And one of her things was that she, she started there and that's where she wants to end her career. And she's, she's done a good, good thing out there for the people. So, and they're, like I said, 99.9 percent, just like anywhere else. So, you got a lot of good employees, and you got a few.
Absolutely. And that's, when you come in, and, and that's what a buying group is going to want to, that's the first thing they're going to do, is sit down with the key, key employees. What's going on? You know, because they're the front lines, they're the boots on the ground. And let's face it, healthcare is, it's changing. And, you know, the, the argument out there, skilled nursing is, it's a difficult, and it's, it's a very difficult process. And it's.
See Carol shaking her head.
Right? It's, it's tough. And so, you, you need those people. What's good, what's bad? You know, what, what do we need to do here? And, you know, an employee's been there for almost 50 years, that's probably the first, the first call.
And employees that have been out there even, you know, a, a good period of time, say like five years, that are in the PMI and stuff like that, they've dealt with these people for years. So, they know, they know how to handle them. And it'd be a shame to see, you know, them be put out, and somebody put in there, that would be disrupt. I'm sure the company, the outfit that would be putting in a bid would be very aware of that. You know, you don't want to interrupt, or interrupt the people that are out, or, or upset the people that are.
Right. Again, you have, you have a pretty much full home, you know, other than the, you know, the home is never going to be 100% full for obvious reasons. But 85 to 90%, that's where you want to be. And that's, you know, it looks like historically, you guys have been there. So, you don't want to disrupt, there's not, that's, the whole point is, there's not too much to disrupt, other than the union issue.
Tom, I know it's kind of hard to chime in when you can't see us here. Is there anything you would like to ask him?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
He's not feeling well.
I think it's, it's a start is what it is.
Yeah.
And it's a process. What we need to do is take it a step at a time. I think he laid it out pretty well today.
Any questions from anyone else? Carol, he said he's going to need some information for, from you. So, could you stick around, please? Thank you. Anyone else got any questions?
No. So, I guess, next process is, no, potentially, we could have it on the 27th agenda. And that would be up to Mr. Johnson, if he felt that, after looking at it closer, it was something he could do. We could put it on that agenda.
We'll coordinate, we'll coordinate.
I, I, I would, I would think we could make that. Like I said, there are.
Well, what we can do is put it on for discussion, possible board action, and then you'll have to try it. Whether you can convey to us whether you think it's ready to go.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for your time today, Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And when things, questions do come up, please, fire away anytime. Why we're here. Thanks again.
Why we're here. Anything else to come before us? Entertainer motion for adjournment.
No move.
Second?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The person who should.